Well, thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm really -- you can go ahead and move it to the next one, Ann or Holly, I'm sorry. This is what we want to do tonight. We have been working diligently on this study now since February. March is when we took this one on. And what we wanted to do today is to share with you our early findings from that analysis, provide some context for it, talk about next steps, and then receive some feedback from you. Just a quick reminder, all of the information you're going to be getting tonight comes from that 40-page report that was in your board packet. It's also accessible through the agenda. And so today is just the thumbnail, or tonight, I guess, is just the thumbnail of what is already in that larger report. This is just to remind everybody about the scope of what it is we were studying. It includes not just what we studied, but possibly as important, what we did not study. We are looking for the impact of electrification on E-Web's portfolio and its load situation from the transportation sector electrification and the building sector electrification. In transportation, we looked only at passenger and light-duty vehicles. We did not study commercial freight vehicles or transit buses. In the building sector, we looked only at domestic space and water heating, and by "domestic" here, I mean residential and commercial space and water heating. We did not study industrial space and water heating or industrial processes. And of course, the context for E-Web doing this study is that climate change strategies around the country and locally as well tend to focus on electrifying transportation and buildings as a way to meet goals. And we think what we're learning in this first phase of this study is that E-Web is well situated to assist the community with those goals. We are part of a larger regional power grid that is relatively clean because of our great hydro base, so that's helpful. We also have, as a region and as a utility, a legacy of energy efficiency programs. And we are also, on an average energy basis, E-Web is long for a while, which means we can adapt to some of this load as it comes. Next, please. This is just a reminder that this study is part of and one of E-Web's 2020 strategic goals. This goal actually started the year as an electric supply planning goal, but we converted this in, I guess it was March or February, based on the communities and the board's interest in the impact of electrification on the region. And so that's what we're doing here. We would have needed to have done this analysis in any event for our future IRP plans, but this gives us a really good head start on it. Next one. This is just a reminder that this, and I'll probably remind you five times before the evening is over, but this is a preliminary analysis. So this is Phase 1 of our larger analysis. And the final report for Phase 1 will come to you in October. Between now and then, though, we still have a certain amount of work to do, including a deeper dive into the impact of electrification on our portfolio and resources. We haven't yet fully studied the impact of electrification under peak load scenario, a 1 in 10 peak load impact, so we need to do that. We will be scrubbing our assumptions carefully and developing our methodologies and benchmarking with other entities. And in particular, we will be clarifying our findings with Northwest Natural to make sure that our assumptions are correct. So we'll be working with them on that. The real point of this analysis, though, is to develop an analytical model and tool that the utility can use for all of its resource planning and its community outreach interest in decarbonization. That tool will allow us to examine, once we have it in place, it'll allow us to examine all kinds of futures and scenarios for decarbonization that people want to look at. It will assist us with understanding how the regional power grid will evolve over time, and it'll assist us with IRP planning and developing customer-facing programs. So this is really a work in progress. That's what we're hoping to get out of this. Next one, please. So this slide begins, the high-level impacts that we thought were worthy of pointing out to you. The first is that, based on our early look at this data and our early study, the pace and impact of electrification on E-Web's system appears to be manageable. And what we mean by the word "manageable" is that we have an obligation to serve all load that presents itself to us, but the pace of electrification tends to be slow enough that we can adapt to it. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we're long on an average energy basis. We also have a distribution system that, at first blush, it appears there is enough capacity on our distribution and transmission system that we can adapt to this load as it presents itself. So what this graph does is it shows you the cumulative impact of electrification on our average load situation up through 2050. Assuming a very high level of electrification, it looks like it would add about 55 average megawatts to our load. That's about 20% of our current average load. Next one. This is another important early finding. The most important one is probably that the real opportunity for E-Web, for electrification and carbon reductions in the community, come from electric vehicles. We did look at space and water heating conversions in this graph, but the truth is, EVs have a great market share potential under this study because there are very few electric vehicles in our service area right now, as a percentage of the total that could be. That is not true for space and water heating, which is why it ends up being a smaller opportunity for us than the EVs. We serve 75% of the residential and commercial space and water heating market right now, and so it limits our opportunities to do more of that in the future. Next slide. This is something else to understand, that the technology we're assuming for these conversions really matters. If residential space heating load were to convert to a lower-efficiency technology, like a baseboard electric technology, for example, the impact on our load over time could be very significant, as you can tell from the gray bars on this graph. On the other hand, if the load converts to more standard efficiency or even some of the higher-efficiency equipments that are out there, that would cut the impact on E-Web's loads by more than half. So it's substantial, and it's really important. Next slide. It's hard to anticipate the effect that electrification of vehicles would have on E-Web's load, in part because the adoption rates are so uncertain. You can see from this graph that the potential for EV adoption ranges from a low of 3% of total vehicles in 2050 all the way up to a very high percentage, 100%, of vehicles in the service territory would be electric. What we have done in our analysis is we have assumed that, we have assumed what we call a "high-growth scenario." That's that gray dotted line, and it assumes that 45% of the vehicles will be electric by 2050. We got the 45% number from E3. E3 is a nationally-known consultant that does a lot of work with organizations and jurisdictions around the country on deep decarbonization strategies. And this 45% assumption that E3 uses came from an assumption that we would be into a high-decarbonization economy and a high-decarbonization strategy politically that results in that 45%. So that is, that's the figure we used in making our assumptions. The orange solid line is the City of Eugene's forecast for electric vehicles. Next slide. Before we turn to talking about the decarbonization impact of electrification, I just want to put this slide up here. The graphic here also comes from E3, and it is just really to remind everybody that electrification is only one of many strategies to decarbonize the power sector. Next slide. We might spend some time on this slide, but this is the slide that describes the carbon savings from electrification. I think what's the good news here is that electrification really does lead to carbon savings. But there's something to understand, too, on this slide. This is the other important point, which is that even assuming a high level of electrification, we are still, there's still quite a gap between what we would achieve through this electrification in terms of carbon reduction goals and what the city's carbon reduction goals are. We don't know why that is yet entirely. We are going to be working with the city to double-check our assumptions and make sure we understand what their goals are and the basis for those goals. But I just wanted to remind you, going back to that previous slide, that electrification is only one strategy for reducing carbon. So I don't know to what extent other strategies are not considered in our analysis but would be considered in the city's analysis. Next one. So starting to wrap things up here, I guess the important considerations are, again, the results are subject to change between now and final publication, which will happen in October. We are really trying to make sure that we have our assumptions correctly identified and that we are performing the right amount of quality assurance and quality control on our data to make sure that it's a solid, data-driven result. The other, I guess, high-level conclusion is that carbon impacts in the later years, say, 2030 and beyond, are very uncertain, and it really depends on a lot of these assumptions. So, next slide. The purpose of this slide is just to give you a feel for where this study fits in all of E-Web's electric supply planning processes and also our upcoming contract expirations. We are in Phase 1 right now. You can see that in the star in the bottom of the graph. We will release our final report on Phase 1 in October. We begin Phase 2 in 2021 and hope to have that out to you then. The Phase 2 focus will be a deeper analysis of the economics to E-Web and others of electrification. We will take a deeper dive into mitigation measures that might be necessary. And by mitigation measures, what I mean here are the sorts of customer-facing programs that would help us mitigate potentially negative impacts on our loads and our other customers from electrification. We will also be doing a deeper dive into the availability of E-Web's infrastructure to adapt to this. And finally, we'll be looking at the regional resource mix over time. There was that earlier question that came up in response to public comment, President Maital, about solar assumptions to be made. And I would just say that those are, that's an important piece of work, but it probably would not happen until later on. How the grid, the regional grid mix changes over time would be something we analyze in the future in an IRP scenario, and that would include an analysis of the impact of solar load on our resource mix. So, next slide. So now we come to the time where I get to stop talking, and you guys can ask me questions. There are a couple of things we're interested in learning from you. One is whether there are any assumptions you'd like more information about before we publish the Phase 1 report in October. And then a second question is whether there are areas you'd like to see us refine or expand upon in Phase 2. Last slide. I put this up here because this is Megan's favorite quote, and it does seem applicable. So anyway.
Thank you.
Any questions you might have?
Would you, whoever's controlling the slides, move it back to the question slides, or everybody can just be reminded what those are, and I'll open up a queue. And before I do, I'll just say on my behalf, I just want to thank the both of you, Megan and Susan, and whoever else contributed to the report. You know, when we started this process, when you first reported to us back in February, you know, I think they were honestly right. There was a bit of a mismatch between what it is that we felt like we needed to focus on at this point in time and where that process was headed. But you all made a pivot, and at least for my part, I'm just really thrilled with the report that we have and the information that we're receiving. So thank you for, you know, thank you for taking that request to heart and giving us something that we can really grapple with. I will open up a queue. Again, I see everybody but Dick, and I don't know why that is, but in any case, if anybody would like to jump in the queue, raise your hand, and I'll, and we'll start there. Dick, if you're raising your hand, I don't know, and actually now that I think, and I don't see Sonia now, I don't, so just so you know, I can see four or five people at a time, and I guess it's the last four or five people who have spoken. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you, Susan, Megan, and others. That's a very good report, and it's actually understandable. Thank you for somebody like me. Just maybe this goes in Phase 2, but have you considered what happens with, on the regional mix, if the acceleration of decommissioning of the Montana and Wyoming coal happens? I know we've talked about the potential brownouts and things in the region and a shortage. Has that come into any of your calculations or analysis, either in Phase 1 and/or Phase 2?
Commissioner Brown, it hasn't yet, but it will. That's clearly part of the analysis we'll be doing in Phase 2, and it'll include looking at how the regional resource mix evolves over time, including the shutdown of those coal plants. So yes, it is something that'll come up in the second phase of this first-phase study.
Okay, and just to tag on to that, so then we'll know that if, I mean, if those decommissionings are accelerated, how that will change our capacity and our adequacy to meet the electrification goals over certain time periods?
Yes, indirectly it will. We should have the ability, once we develop this analytical method that we are developing in the context of this study, to input many assumptions about our resource future that we can analyze, including how does the grid change and what would that do for E-Web's supply adequacy situation? That is predominantly a long-term integrated resource plan analysis, John, looking at how, how much resource we have to serve available demand on our system. That's predominantly, and Frank wants to correct me, so I'm gonna let Frank jump in.
Frank, you're muted.
I was, I was. Thank you, President Maital. So one of the things that this type of modeling and effort will help with is that some of the issues that Commissioner Brown, you referred to, have to do with adequacy of resource in the Northwest under certain conditions, you know, low hydro, you don't have coal anymore. This can actually provide input into those analyses as well. This isn't just a "only-for-E-Web" type of result here. When people ask us, "What's your load gonna look like? What's your resource mix gonna look like?", then that can provide input into things like resource adequacy. So it's a bidirectional benefit that will help us all. But we're, we're gonna look at the makeup, you know, different scenarios and sensitivities around changes in the electric supply side going forward, both the characteristics of generation and also the carbon attributes of generation. Both of those change, and they will look a lot different in 2050 than they do today. And so we need to be able to model that, and that's gonna be part of the next phases.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to jump in the queue? Actually, before we do that, maybe Travis or Ann, if you're on the line, if you have any suggestions for me for how I can sort of scroll through the other 17 folks who are apparently on the line. I only see three or four people or five people, I guess, at a time. Sometimes it's not the other commissioners, or it depends on who was last to speak. If you have any suggestions about that.
President Maital, I think it's a function of us having the slide displayed. You should be able to see nine tiles of videos when we're not in presentation mode. Other than scrolling, I don't have any other suggestions at this time.
Okay, well, we'll make do. There's a lot of buttons here I could press, but I've been afraid to do that, so I'll, I'll make do in the old-fashioned way. Dick, perhaps you wanted to jump in the queue?
I would like to. I don't know if you can see me or not, but--
I do see you now, yeah.
At least you can hear me. So I appreciate the draft report. I also want to acknowledge that you've probably got a little more work to do to finalize it. I just got a couple of quick questions to start with. One is I just, the takeaway for me was that the amount of potential load associated with both transportation electrification and conversions of fossil-fuel-fired space heating, the amount of load, both in terms of peak and energy, are somewhat uncertain, but probably in a range that's manageable in general terms. And that's, that's good news, because I think up to this point, we haven't had much of an idea of how much load we were potentially talking about. Am I, am I correct, though, that the report to this point does not really address what resources E-Web would use or would be required over time, at what kinds of costs in order to serve this load, notwithstanding the fact that it's probably manageable from a physical accommodation standpoint? That's really Phase 2 work, right?
That is Phase 2, Commissioner. That's correct. I would also just add that, I guess that's it. That's correct. This is Phase 2.
I, I'm keenly interested in that Phase 2 work, in as much as that'll kind of inform us all as to what the impacts are for E-Web and our customers of moving forward on this path. I, I'm not sure, while I think we look forward to making a positive contribution to the decarbonization agenda, I'm a little reticent to fully embrace that before knowing what that really means in terms of resource requirements over time and potential impacts on our costs and our rates. I, I have no impatience around that, because I understand that's future work, but I would simply point out that I probably will not be on the board at that point to hear and appreciate the results of that work. So that being the case, let me just point out a couple of thoughts that I have for the board about some policy-level questions that we ought to all be thinking about in the meantime. One is, you know, should we, how should we approach working towards our contribution to the city's goals in light of the fact that we are all, I think, positively disposed to playing an important role, but yet not yet in a position to know what the impacts on our resource mix and our costs are? So that's kind of, you know, so how aggressively should we engage this before we've completed the Phase 2 work and are in a position, from a policy standpoint, to evaluate what that means for E-Web and our customers from a cost perspective? And then the second thought that I have, even if the rates go up, it might be that in a general sense, for the community as a whole, that this would represent nonetheless a least-cost strategy for meeting carbon objectives. So not for debate tonight, but just as a general policy matter, as we look forward to hearing more about the costs and the impacts. Is it okay for the rates to go up if this is a viable means to meet the community's carbon objectives? And I don't, I just leave that as an open question for us all to think about. Thank you.
All right, well, Commissioners Carlson and Schlossberg, I don't see you right now. If either of you wants to jump in the queue, you know, one of you go ahead, and then the other afterwards.
Okay. All right, this is Sonia. So yeah, thank you very much for the report. I read every word of it. It was fascinating. I love the pivot that you made. I think the information in it was very helpful. I mean, for me, I didn't feel like initially, when I read through the report, that there were any, you know, different assumptions I would necessarily make. It really looked to me like we were looking at where are the areas where we can go after deep decarbonization, and if the community as a whole chooses to do that, what are the switching methodologies that we take in order to do that? Which, you know, for me, that, that made sense, that the report focused on transportation and heating, because heating is actually more of the place where we have those purchases that we have to go out onto the market. There were some comments made earlier that we purchase them between August and September, and I don't think that that's the case. I think the, generally, and correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, when we go out on, we have more of those market purchases, it's really when we have a lot more of those cold snaps, maybe in the summertime when we have some really hot snaps and we don't have the hydro available, but primarily, it's when we have those heating events and we don't have, and if it's, if it's in the wintertime, then we don't have solar available at that point. So for me, the report made sense in that, you know, I mean, for us, I'm looking at the report here, this is why I'm looking kind of off-screen and another screen, that, you know, transportation for the City of Eugene is 50% of the resource emissions. And if that's, I mean, that is a huge, low-hanging fruit that we need to go after. So for me, that, you know, that makes a lot of sense in the assumptions that are made and the focus of the report. I do wonder about the, I think the only thing that struck me in that was the feasibility of being able to get to those different places. You know, I don't, I don't know what the general rates are that people replace vehicles. If, I'm assuming that people aren't just, you know, I bought a new car, I'm gonna dump it next year just to get a new electric vehicle. I mean, people tend to use the vehicle for a while until it goes out. So I do wonder about the rates of replacement and how that matches the curve. But again, these are very minor, very minor, small details in which, you know, I think that the overall Phase 2 of the report doesn't really need to handle. It's just something that struck out to me. I mean, I think you're on the right track and appreciate all of the work that you've done so far to give us this information and make this pivot. I understand this and where we're going with it, I think is where I'm, where I'm trying to indicate to. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schlossberg, if you have anything to say, I, I can't see you, but so if you're raising your hand out there, you're welcome to speak.
Great, thank you. So thank you for this report. I want to echo what everyone else has said. And so my takeaway, and let me know if I have this correct or incorrect, is that if we're looking at the Climate Recovery Ordinance, based on the assumptions of things that the city wants to do, that we absolutely can handle the things that we're being asked to do. I know that there's been some suggestions out there that E-Web wouldn't be able to provide as much clean energy if we adopted all of these suggested proposals, but it looks like we can do it. So that's correct, right?
Commissioner Schlossberg, thank you for asking that question. I think it's just important to say that there is still a deeper work we need to do on the peak-load impact on our loads of electrification. And so on an average-energy basis, this looks doable, but what electrification would do for our peak-load demand and the need to serve that, we still have yet to look at, and that'll come up in October.
Okay. And I guess my other takeaway is when I look at the Eugene's Reduction Goals, and even if, even if we have high electrification, we're so far from the City of Eugene's targets. That's another takeaway. So I know you said you're gonna dig a little deeper to see what their assumptions are, but that's just a really huge difference. And I know that, I'm not sure what their assumptions are, but I guess this just kind of piggybacks on the meeting, meetings that we've been having, the quarterly meetings. I would just really like to see the city work a little closer with us, too, to talk about how we can decarbonize realistically. I see Frank had a comment about that.
Go ahead, Frank. I can't see you, but if you have, if you want to speak, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you, President Maital. I agree with you, Mindy. I think there's, there's a couple of things that we have to really coordinate here. You know, one of the takeaways that, that I have on any of these studies around electrification is that the fine print matters. There's a whole bunch of assumptions that-- is that the fine print matters. There's a whole bunch of assumptions that get made in these studies, and we need to coordinate, in fact, we have meetings already planned, to coordinate with the city and city staff so that they can understand what our assumptions are. And simultaneously, we have meetings set up with Northwest Natural, where we want to review our assumptions around the usage cases as well. So, I think it's really important that, you know, we've, we've done some educated guessing. We've done some high-level extrapolation of what we think is going on, but the details do matter, and so we want to make sure we're coordinating really well with the city as well as Northwest Natural, because, you know, we're, we're talking really about fuel switching in both transportation and in space and water heating. And we want to make, those are very complex when you start getting into the whole way energy operates. And so, you're absolutely right. We need to coordinate on, not just the city end, but also on Northwest Natural's end.
All right, well, I'll jump in. I added five minutes to our, to our topic here, just so we can finish up. I didn't have a chance to ask everybody if that's okay, but I took that liberty. I'll just add a couple of questions, and then hopefully we can wrap up. So, thanks again for the, the presentation and the report. A couple of things that I hear questions about frequently that maybe could be resolved in a little bit of a deeper dive in this Phase 1 is the potential for, you know, so-called climate refugees, right? So, that is the idea that this is a relatively safe place to be vis-à-vis climate impacts and perhaps other parts of the country experiencing, you know, hurricanes and other kinds of storm-related events, might decide to move here at higher rates than we've experienced over the last 30 years. So, I wonder if we could just do some sensitivity analysis that said, well, if, if we, I don't know what the population increase is by percentage on a year-over-year basis over the last 15 or 20 years, but if we doubled or tripled it, what would that do to our load growth between now and 2050? So, we had some sense of what that might also do to us, generally speaking, is one thing I'd like to see in Phase 1. And then I have a question. If there was one other type of load that you would recommend going after in addition to EVs and the water heating component, and what might it be? What's the, what's the other opportunity that you think is out there that we ought to consider including?
Well, with regard to that last question first, Commissioner Maital, I would say that what we're really focused on is understanding how electrification would impact our loads, our resources, and our customers. And so, I'm not sure that we are looking personally that this utility is in a position where we're trying to pursue an electrification impact goal. I don't think that's our role. Our role is to serve load as it comes, and we have an obligation to serve when this load presents itself. But we can certainly take a look at other opportunities. This might be a Phase 2, not a Phase 1, analysis, though, as to what the other opportunities might be.
Okay. Well, in that case, my final comment really is for the other commissioners. We have two presumptive commissioners that are joining the board and who will receive the Phase 2 analysis, and then two of us who won't be here for that. And so, I wonder if the other commissioners are okay with opening Question 2 in particular up to the presumptive commissioners to provide some feedback back to Susan, so that when they do join the board, they, and three months later, they're reading this report, it reflects concerns that they may have had. Yeah, Commissioner Carlson.
I mean, if we can reach out and get feedback from them, I would be fine with that. That seems like a reasonable way to go. You get to the end of the report, and then two-fifths of your commission doesn't agree with the path you took. I think that's a very nice gesture. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe we're, our staff's in touch with them frequently. I am, at least with Matt McCray. Not hard to reach out to them. Any other thoughts about that?
I have a question, by May, just about the, the aspect of how far they can go in directing staff or giving staff input on how they might want to see things happen if they're not officially part of the board yet. Is that okay, Frank? So, we don't get in trouble by having input from somebody that isn't duly elected yet?
Thanks for the, putting me on the spot, Commissioner Brown. You know, I actually think that soliciting input is something that we do all the time, even with the general public, and the fact that we have two presumptive board members who potentially could supply some, some opinion and information is great. If they are going to actually do something that directs resources in such a way that would be a different path than this board has directed, then I would, I would raise that flag with this board, just-- and there's a little bit of judgment involved there. I'm, I'm not opposed to making sure that we understand the two new board members' perspectives on this. As long as we're not starting to redirect staff, I think that's where I would draw the line.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure we didn't set ourselves up for a challenge if somebody doesn't like what we're coming up with. Thank you.
Well, I think, you know, Commissioner Brown, I think that, you know, the one thing about this is there will be a lot of scenarios that people want to look at. And I really think the most important thing for us to do as a utility is, when we speak of electrification, which is really one piece of a big decarbonizing effort, we need to make sure that the decisions that this board and future boards will be faced with do not put us in a position where we cannot handle our obligation to serve in a way that's not aligned with the values that we have around, you know, very carbon-free resources and other things. So, I think that this is very informative to the paths and the decisions ahead, because we do have to look at a number of different futures. And this happens to look at the load side of that futures, of those futures. So, I think that this is gonna be a valuable tool, because we will be asked, "Well, what about this resource?", or "What about that resource?", "What if this load changes or that load changes?", and so, I think we're putting ourselves in a position to do that.
Thanks. If you get any controversial, or, you know, judgment calls it, you know, you can always bring it back to the board and ask for our approval of whether or not, you know, that we want to allow staff or ask staff to move forward with specific requests by the presumptive commissioners. Last question for me. Can you just clarify, Susan? Did the study include potential, what would you call it, heat from the-- sorry, my-- from the commercial sector? I was trying to differentiate commercial and industrial. Does domestic, sorry, I think what I'm trying to say is, does domestic heat include commercial?
It does, sir, and I apologize for not making that clear. It was residential and commercial space and water heat. The study that you have, the initial report, does not quite capture the commercial load potential in the way that the residential sector has, but we will capture that in terms for final publication in October.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, we are a few minutes over. Apologies primarily to John Brown. We will-- are there any other questions that commissioners wanted to ask? And again, I can only see right now John Brown and Sonia, so if others have questions, you can speak up.
President Maital, Dick Olson.
Go ahead, Dick.
I just want to make a comment about the earlier discussion about the new commissioners. I would, I would assume more broadly that we're moving into a phase where they're gonna be subject to some orientation work by staff. I'm not sure exactly how we accomplish that in these days of COVID, but normally that includes briefings on salient matters that are likely to come before the board early in their tenure. There are a number of those, including issues having to do with our Upriver Hydro project. So, I really see this, this issue is really no different than other things that would be folded into that orientation, and I would just encourage the board officers and the senior staff to be looking at schedules and trying to figure out how to pursue that, so that as those new folks come on, not only in the case of this topic, but others, that there's as much of a seamless transition as possible. And in as much as we're not presently contemplating decisions, at least on this matter, I don't think there's formally a constitutional problem. So, anyway, I support that proposal that they be brought into the discussion that way, and just pointing out that there are more topics that would be of the same hilt.
All righty. Any final comments from any of the other commissioners, or Frank, or Susan?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Commissioner, that Megan and the planning team have been working nonstop from home on this for some time, and they got a great deal of assistance from Renee Gonzalez's communications team, who helped put that report into a format that was, made it digestible to non-technical people, including me. So, I just wanted to call them out and say thank you.
Well, thanks to everybody then for the report. It really is fantastic. I very much appreciate it. All right, well--